Good evening, everybody. This is Abby Pierceall, the Planning Director. It looks like we have another member, so we're going to get underway. We're going to start off with a quick statement about the fact that we are recording the audio and video of tonight's meeting. If anybody has questions about the proceedings from this evening, you can call the Planning and Zoning Office at 860-444-5813 during business hours. Or you can look for additional materials on our website at waterfordct.org via the Planning Department. I'm going to go ahead and take a quick roll and then turn it over to our chair. So John Mashaw.
Here.
Tim Bleesdale is not here. Joe Bunkley? Joe DeBono is not here. Craig Masid is not here. Karen Barnett?
Here.
Okay. With that, I will turn it over to our Chair, Mr. Bunkley.
All right. Thank you, Abby. Good evening, everybody. We will now call the order of the Meeting of the Planning and zoning Commission of the Town of Waterford on this day, March 9th, 2021, at 6:35 PM. Karen, we will seat you for Mr. DeBono.
Okay.
Thank you. Item number two, approval of the February 23rd, 2021 meeting minutes.
This is John. I'll move approval of the minutes.
Second.
All right. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
John, I'm assuming you're in favor?
Yes, aye.
And I am also. So moved. Item number three, receipt of applications.
There are no new applications.
Thank you. Item number four, application review. PL-21-1, request of Home Theater TV incorporation and Douglas Z. Wizardic. Owners SigCon Associates LLC applicant for site plan approval to locate a multifamily development on property located at 384 and 394. An extension in accordance with section 16 and 18 of the zoning regulations and as shown, unplanned title of Waterford Woods Site Development Plans, 1118-2020, revised to February 10th, 2021. An action is required by April 29, 2021. Is the applicant here?
We are here.
All right, sir. The floor is yours.
All right. Thank you very much. For the record, my name is Brandon Handfield. I'm a civil engineer with the Antic River Consultants located in Lebanon, Connecticut, representing the applicant SigCon Associates LLC. Also with us tonight at the meeting to answer any questions, John Wico is our project architect, and Joseph Valskus is our traffic engineer. My presentation will go through the existing site, provide a description of the proposed site development, and we'll review the architectural plans. If you have any questions at any time, please feel free to ask. Don't hesitate to interrupt me. What I'll do is I'll share my screen now and we'll click through the boards and get things going. All right. So I won't spend much time here. I just wanted to provide some orientation. So the site location map on your sheet number one is in the top right corner. Our property is highlighted in orange on the roadmap of Waterford, and we're located on the south side of Willets Avenue Extension. On the east side of Waterford, the city of New London boundary is about 2,000 feet to the east. Boston Post Road is just to our north with an intersection about 500 feet to the northwest, and the railroad corridor would be just below or to the south our site. What you have here is, basically, I took the survey and overlaid it on top of the 2019 aerial image to describe the existing conditions, and it allows us to see the land around us and the uses around us. The properties in question are outlined in orange, so 384 Willets Avenue Extension is a smaller piece here on the northeast side. Just for reference purposes, north is to the left of the sheet. So this is 384 Willets, and the balance of the site in orange is 394 Willets Avenue. In combination, the properties are about 26.6 acres in total. Willets Avenue against to the north, we have frontage along Willets Avenue. And again, the railroad corridor would be to our south. My Rock Avenue would be to our east, and Minor Lane would be to our west. In terms of the existing site, we're located within the commercial multifamily zone, which was a zone change back in 2020. Currently, the property is undeveloped, but there is a history of land use on this site, and we were able to discern that from reviewing historical aerials, mainly the 1965, which I did include in here so you can see the extent of that previous land use. But on this survey, you do see the remaining woods roads that go through the site, and that served the historical uses, and they go all the way out to this area out here. In general, the site slopes from a high point at Willets Avenue to the northeast, right about here, and, and as you can see by topography flows in a southeastern or southwestern direction towards the wetlands within the center of the site. The wetlands are shown here in teal or highlighted in teal, and they were flagged by James Sipperly. In terms of vegetation, the vegetation along the inland wetlands is generally mature with some invasive growth. The areas outside of the wetland areas are less mature and a result of the historical land use activities. And is it by zoom in here, you can see our surveyors picked up a number of debris piles and construction demolition debris piles that were left here from those uses. And what I'll do is just go, this is the 1965 aerial, just to give you a sense. This is the same woods road that our surveyor picked up, and it does align with those historical roads. And what you can see in front of the site, there was a good deal of land use activity. Not sure what it is, but it looks like a contractor's lay down yard. That continues sporadically through the site here. And as you make your way back, there's some extensive lay down areas here with either canisters or roll offs. And as we get to the back, we have a similar condition. You can see the rectangular shape. So off of this woods road, basically, everything inside of this line, which represents the 100 year setback, or I'm sorry, the 100 foot upland review area, was disturbed. Let's see. So clicking on to our proposed layout, just for reference purposes, what we were just talking about, that same 100 foot line is here. And you can see, we tried to keep our development within that, which is the limit of historical uses. This is the overall development that was included in your planned set of sheet number two. And I'll briefly go through the high level elements on this plan, and then we can get into details. I won't go too deep unless you want me to. But what you see here is the main development. We're proposing three new multifamily buildings with a total of 98 multifamily units. 58 of those units will be one bedroom, 40 will be two bedroom. Building A is furthest to the north, has 34 units. Building B in the center also has 34 units, and building C has 30 units. In total, 98 units and 100 and if my math is correct here. Yeah, 98 units, sorry. Main access to the site will be in the northeast corner to Willets Avenue, and what you see here is a boulevard style entrance and exit with a 12 foot wide grass island between. Again, we'll get into those a better scale for visibility. Our traffic engineer, who is on the line, Joseph Valskus, did review the access conditions and found that the traffic generation by our site will have minimal impact on the existing road network and surrounding areas. And we provide adequate sight lines in accordance with ASJO guidelines. If you have any questions, Joe would be happy to jump in on that. As the main access comes in, it serves a network of interior access driveways with parking areas for our three buildings. In total, we have 168 parking spaces, which just exceeds the minimum required, 167. And within those parking areas, we do have accessible areas. Pedestrian access, it's a little hard to see in this plan, so we can see it on the next one, but we do have interconnection of all our buildings with parking areas, access drives, and we interconnect with the existing sidewalk on Willets Avenue. And what you see here are three recreation areas, again, tough scale, but we have a recreation to the northwest for building A to the west for building B or the southwest, and we have to the south of building C. Our total recreation area exceeds the requirements or minimum requirements for the 98 units. All right. And lastly, on this sheet, you can see our trash and recycling area is located at the northwest corner, which is closest to the commercial uses that are adjacent to us. Moving into a better scale plan sheet number three, I must, again, won't spend too much time. We did cover most of it, but here's your main access with the boulevard entrance. You can see the central 12 foot wide island, your entrance on the west, your exit on the east. Let's see here. One thing I will point out on this sheet here is we are proposing to reconstruct the sidewalks along our entire frontage. So currently, they're a four to five foot wide bituminous concrete sidewalk with a varying grass shelf that separates the curb. We're proposing a five foot wide concrete sidewalk in accordance with the Department of Public Works requirements and improving that grass shelf. And parallel with that sidewalk, we're proposing a vinyl cross buck fence to provide a nice visual aesthetic as you enter or pass by the site. Let's see, on this sheet, what won't show on the next, so this is the north side of development, the mail pad building or mail pad itself is located at the front of the site to provide convenient access for the postal service as well as our residents. We provide two satellite parking spaces for that mail pad building for both the mailman or woman and the residents to temporarily park. This is a two-way access drive down to the trash and recycling enclosure, which would be enclosed with a six foot high vinyl or white vinyl privacy fence with double gates. This road here to the, along the westerly shoulder is a one-way road mainly for egress of emergency vehicles and maintenance purposes. In general, main, the main driveway will be used by residents, which is two-way. All right. And then before we skip to the next page, this, this does show the main recreation area for building A as well as the common space for all of the residents. So this will be a combination of a dog park as well as a satellite grill and gathering area. So after meeting with the design review board a few hours ago, one of the things they requested was additional detail on the final plans that we file, and we're more than happy to provide the locations of the grills and amenities within these areas, as well as the delineation of the dog park, so that it is on the final plans. Moving on to the south side of the site, this covers most of the buildings. As you can see, the parking that serves all the buildings in the front side and rear. The main access along the easterly boundary line continues, and it has a loop connection to that maintenance road. Let's see here. Building, so now we get a good look at the sidewalk and interconnection of all the parking areas, the front doors of buildings A, B, and C, as well as the rear garden level units for buildings A and B. And I'll get into those garden level units a little more in detail, but building A and building B are built integrate. So what you have is basically the first floor is elevated about 10 or 11 feet above the garden level or basement level units. These units are served by separate doors to the rear and separate, so we provide separate sidewalks to those units. And you can see those here, and parking is provided as well, so they can, those are handicapped accessible. Building C is not stepped into grade because this area is generally flat. So this is your standard three-story unit without garden level units. Just to check off the recreation area for buildings B and C. Building B's recreation area is located to the southwest, and this will be generally just a grill and gathering area, not a dog park. So there will be grill amenities, chairs, tables, and benches. And the same goes for, to the south of building C. Well, the building C residents will have the same grill table and chair amenities to enjoy the outdoors. All right. I will quickly go through the details or the engineered details, but this is the first sheet of your grading and drainage plans. Just for reference purposes, green is sewer, blue is water, yellow is gas, red is electric and telecommunications, and cyan would be our drainage. Sewer will be connecting to an existing main in Willets Avenue. It'll be a gravity connection, and then we will provide a manhole for a future force main connection. I'll get into that in the next sheet, but as I said before, this whole site is lower than the road, so we do have to pump our sewage effluent back up to get into that main. The water main will connect to the existing 12 inch main within Willets Avenue. I have had conversations with both the Town of Waterford and City of New London Utilities, and they find that the plan for a single main acceptable, and we do have adequate capacity for connection. Again, gas will connect to the existing main within the street, and power will connect to the existing overhead utility. There's a number of utilities along our frontage. We've elected to connect to the northeast utility pole. In terms of drainage, most of the detail shown in the next sheet, but there is a system on the north side that collects the main boulevard and the trash collection area and discharges to a forbay before entering our main system to the south. And in terms of grading, I think the next sheet does a better job of explaining what we were talking about before. As you can see here, for building A, you can see how we stepped it into grade. So existing contours, we have about a eight to nine foot grade change over the building, and we have a 10 or 11 foot grade change within our building. So what we did is use the existing contours as much as possible to limit mass excavation and fill. And you can see how quickly we're able to tie into existing contours by doing that. And so here, I'll focus on sewer first. Here's our pump station located at the southwest corner of our site, which will collect each of the buildings by a gravity and discharge through a force main out to the street. In blue, you see our water main, which serves each building with a domestic and fire supply, as well as three additional fire hydrants and gas service to each building as well. In terms of tap locations and the appearance, gas will hit the building at two separate corners behind a screening fence and landscaping. And electric and telecommunications will hit one corner of each building, also behind a screening fence and landscaping. I think that basically covers utilities. The drainage system, as we get back towards the buildings, there's two main systems. First, we collect the water from within or the runoff within our parking areas and street. Our first detention and treatment area is 01A to the east or to the west of building A, which basically consists of a sediment forbay, detention area to attenuate our flows, and then a filter bed to further treat low flows. We do have an underground storage and treatment area for a small portion of the parking here that we were not able to get to any of the above ground basins. And then to the southeast, we have this larger basin here that collects most of the main access drive and areas around building C. Again, we have a sediment forbay attenuation area and a filter bed treatment area. In total, our drainage system has zero net increase in peak flow, and we fully treat the water quality, volume, and water quality flow from the site in accordance with the 2004 manual. Erosion and sedimentation control, it's a pretty standard look at it. We have our entrance controls with anti-tracking apron at Willets Avenue. We have perimeter controls everywhere. We have downgrade disturbance, and we also have intermediate controls where there's long expanses of undisturbed area. We have point controls at each catch basin. Siltation traps are situated in specific locations to accommodate as construction proceeds in certain low points. And as we get to the back of the site, that system generally continues with siltation traps, diversion swales to minimize any sedimentation or erosion potential. As the site is over five acres, we will be required to get a stormwater, construction stormwater permit from the DEEP. And just to check the box, our plan does meet the 2002 Connecticut soil erosion and sedimentation guidelines. Onto the landscaping. I will start on the north side at the boulevard in our approach to coming onto the site. So along this boulevard, both sides of the main drive are flanked by larger specimen shade trees, which provide vibrant fall colors. We have a mix of sugar maples and little leaf lindens as you come in, so the shapes vary as well as the colors in the fall. And you'll see that continues along that main access drive to the rear. And the only other element I want to check on this sheet to the north is the screening that we're proposing along the north and west boundary. So along this existing property here, we're proposing to supplement the existing vegetation in this maintained area with screening trees consisting of a mix of spruce, pine, and fir trees that alternate in location, so staggered. And that continues around the trash and recycling area along the property line. You'll see some straight shade trees here, but most of the landscape is covered on the next sheet. One thing to make sure it's clear is the existing vegetation between our boulevard and this property, we looked at with our landscape architect to see if there was any specimen trees that would be worth saving. You can see we're not proposing to really grade in that area or disturb the soil. But unfortunately, the, the quality of the vegetation is just not worth saving. So we are going to clear it, and that's why we're proposing supplemental plantings. Same goes for this area here between building A and the street. We took a hard look at all the vegetation that's along this stone wall and the trail, and it's unfortunately just not very mature or well grown, and it's really a result of the historical land use you can see by, you know, brick piles, debris piles. This debris pile is quite big. All this area was previously disturbed, so just not a lot of opportunity for old growth or mature growth in those areas. And then moving on to the rear, you can see the shade trees continue as we go along the main access drive and the larger greens. We do transition to some oaks and some, I don't have it on top of me, but a mixture of oaks as well as we get back towards the rear. Around the buildings, we have a mixture of flowering trees as well as foundation shrubs and plantings. That's consistent with all buildings, so around each outdoor porch or on each corner tower and around each utility screening area, we do provide landscaping at all the corners and main entrances, as well as where the sidewalks enter into the buildings. Moving beyond the foundation plans, we also propose some buffer or border plantings that are native, native species. And this was put in intentionally to restore the buffer between the wetlands and our land disturbance. So we're proposing a conservation wildlife seed mix along the entire perimeter of our disturbance, which is shown in this dippled yellow. Clearing is shown in this hatch line here. And then in addition to the conservation seed mix, we're proposing a number of native plantings, including trees and shrubs to supplement and provide a visual barrier so that people don't have, don't wander into this area, although it is steep in some areas, so we don't think that'll happen. All right. And the last page I have for site is the lighting plan. So what we have here is an isometric view of all the light locations, which are shown by these labels here, and the T2, 3, and 4 are indications of the different types of fixtures we selected to use. So what you see is, in general, we were able to get a very good transition and even coverage of light over the entire access drive and parking area by alternating between different fixtures, and that also allowed us to keep the spread of light very narrow, where we do get close to property lines to keep or minimize any encroachment into the public space or onto adjacent property. All the fixtures are LED downlights. There'll be a Cooper lumark fixture. They're mounted to a 15 foot high white steel square post. And the only fixtures that vary from the overhead is, we didn't want to use the taller broadcast fixtures along this pedestrian area here, so we elected to go with ballers, which just illuminate the sidewalk and access areas only. And that basically covers the site. Any questions on the site before I keep going? I've been talking a while, sorry.
But you want to have any questions? I just have one question on your sewer pump.
Yep.
Will that have a generator or anything?
Yes. So the package we're, we're currently putting in will have a backup generator as well as a bypass capability, so it's a kind of a double fail safe.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I have one question.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, this is Karen. Looking at the, the trash area, is that intended that the, the residents will drive their trash over to it, or will it be collected from each building and put over there for just like the dumpster truck to come get?
So these are intended for residents to drive over, and hence they can drive along this one-way road, stop. And we do put a side door into this area that's accessible. So when they get in here, the, the bins for recycling and trash are laid out, so they have easy access. But it is intended they drive them over. It's a little far for us to consider walking with their, with your trash.
Sure. No, I, I mean, that was just my question is, do you expect people to drive the trash over? Would there be a collection near each building and someone in management would be? And then the other question I have too is, are you anticipating that the parking will be assigned, or will it, will there be like resident spaces and guest spaces, or is it all just like a free for all?
It is not assigned. And we will say, I can say one thing with confidence in regards to the number of parking spaces we're proposing. It is far more than we need. And that's just what we've been noticing as apartments have come online is there's just not as many cars that use these facilities, and the people that occupy the units don't have as many people in them. So the requirements of this are 168 parking spaces, which is two spaces for every two bedroom unit and one and a half for every one. It's probably close to a half parking space more than we generally would need to account for residents and visitors. So we, we think it'll work itself out. We don't have any problems at the adjacent Waterford Park. We have one at Essex in the same condition. There's plenty of parking spaces and for visitors and residents without any issue.
Okay. And then is there any kind of a, I, I looked through, but is there a, like a main office anywhere or?
There is not on this site. There is, so this is kind of a related project to Waterford Park, which is located, I guess, down, it's hard to see on this sheet, but.
Just around the corner.
Right here.
Yep.
And they do have a, a small office there where they're able to manage. So there won't be an onsite office, full-time office presence, and, and the office presence down at Waterford Park isn't full-time either. There's just not enough units to justify it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is John, just related to Karen's comments. Are you going to have signage up regarding the flow of traffic in about the one-way travel, and will there be something when you turn down the road heading towards a trash compactor indicating to folks that there's no exit from there, so they don't just use that one-way road to loop around through the back?
Yeah, so we did show pavement markings to indicate the one-way travel, and there will be signage, you know, that says one way here, and then backing out. Um, backing out, sorry for the choppiness. It will also be signage. See the V here. So we do show, uh, no enter signage here for people coming down. So they don't continue traveling down here. So it, it is, it is signed and marked to be one way.
Thanks. Oh, I'm sorry, one other, and you made one other comment when you're describing the garden units versus the units that were above. And I probably misheard, but it made it sound like there was no ability. If somebody came in at the upper level by mistake. And wanted to get down, maybe to visit somebody at a garden level, can they get, get there from that? Upper floor, do they have to go all the way around the back to get to the garden units?
The garden level units are only accessed from the rear outside. Uh, they, there's no interior stairwell to the basement and I, you'll see that a little better in the architectural, but. Um, these, this is a, these two doors are connected by a central hallway. Through the center of the building and, and the stair towers are, are located next to the front doors. Um, those stairs don't continue to the basement, so these are kind of their own units that have their own outside doors. And it'll be handled with unit signage. So that's why building A, there'll be a sign, you know, A, uh, one through thirty. And then these will be separate signed where if they want to get there. Um, but in general, people. I don't think we'll be confused by these eight units and the ample parking we're providing.
Okay.
Alright, um, and I think, I think John's on the line, but I'll, I'll quickly tick through. Um, the basic architectures, if there's detailed questions and John's still available, he can jump in. But this is your garden level floor plan. Um, so you can see most of it is unexcavated slab space. And then on the lower end, you have four units that have their own doors to the outside. So these are independent units that don't have stairwells to the upstairs. And the finished floor of these units is about eleven feet lower than the finished floor of the first floor. And if you roll down, this is a standard first floor unit that has ten bedrooms or ten units total. I believe there are four twos and six ones on each level, pretty similar layouts in each one. Uh, square footage of about twelve thousand square feet total. And you can see this, the stairwells are located in, in the front towers and here's your loop. Hallway that serves all of the units. And one thing we didn't cover is, is each unit does have an exterior balcony space. Uh, or porch or deck space. Uh, let's see, moving into the elevations, we do have rendering, so, um, but this is a profo, uh, front elevation. You see on all three buildings, uh, so three stories facing that front. And, um, the stair towers are located here with all the glass. These end towers are living units and the center tower are living units. And you can see the, the porches and decks between. Uh, this is a typical right side elevation of A or B where you can see the step between the two buildings. Uh, and as we get to the opposite side, this is where, what it would look like if you were looking at the back. So these units here, you can see the doors. These are your garden level access doors, um, from the parking areas. Uh, the building heights about forty seven point two feet from the average grade to the middle, the highest midpoint roof. So we were a little conservative, but it does meet your maximum building height of fifty-five feet. And. This is a general, the, what the appearance of the buildings will be. So this would be the front of building. Uh, this looks like A to me. So this is a realistic rendering of building A if you were standing in the, in the parking lot and the landscaping is pretty close. To what, uh, the species we, we propose. Um, so you can see the glass, central stair towers and access points here and here. Uh, you can see the changes in the roof lines and the jogs in the building to give it a smaller appearance. Uh, and you can see in general, the, the mixture of, uh, exterior, uh, siding choices. In terms of horizontal, vertical and material to, uh, really provide a nice looking building. And this last rendering we have would show the side as well and, and gives a nice reference that the sides of the buildings are attractive as well. So we're not just trying to make the building look good from the front. Uh, it's really a four-sided structure that people will see and, and that's how John designed it. Any questions on the architecture of building?
Alright, it looks like, uh, we don't have any questions at this point, so we can either, would you want to turn it over to John? There you go. You all said with your presentation?
Uh, in general, I, I do, if, if, if you don't have any concerns for the traffic engineer, Joe Balskis is on the line. Uh, I think John Wico is still listening in, but, uh, they're, they're happy to jump in, but that's our general presentation and, um. There's no further questions. I'm happy to give a, a quick closing remark, but that's it.
Um, I have one question for the traffic engineer.
Sure.
What is the distance from the entranceway to the intersection? Where Willets joins Boston Post Road?
Uh, just over five hundred feet.
And in your surveys that you did. Um, did you find that the, I mean, it seems to me, this is just my experiences with that intersection. Cars tend to line up kind of up that hill where the proposed driveway is for this. Complex, do you foresee or in your research, does it show? That these cars will be able to enter and exit their driveway without, um, impacting. Overly that. I mean, typically there's a, especially at the, the travel times of commuters, there's pretty good backups there. Do you, do you see that this? Will add significantly to the congestion at that intersection?
No, no, in fact, you know, we, we analyze the intersection. We had actually traffic counts from, uh, two thousand and nineteen. That are, that are obviously now are conservative, uh, given the, the reduction in volumes. And we did a capacity analysis, that's in the traffic study and you can see the, 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 the increase in queue is nominal. And there's like a forty-foot increase in queue, uh, the, the result of this traffic, uh, during, during the peak hour. So, yeah, we don't, we don't see that as a significant impact. Level service didn't change. And, and yeah, there's some increase in queue, but it's, it's not a queue that's gonna, that's gonna back up, uh, and, and block this, this side access. So it's a, it's a nominal increase in the queue expected, you know, we have ninety-eight units, we have about fifty cars being generated, not a lot of traffic. But, you know, it's, it's route one is a signalized intersection, so we add some traffic to this approach, it's gonna have some kind of, some, some queue. We're not gonna need to retime the intersection, so the bottom line is, yeah, we don't see, we don't see as a significant impact. Is, is it adding to a little bit? Yeah, it is, it is. Uh, but this is pre-pandemic travel volumes and we know that the travel volumes in the future or even today are not what they were, um, over a year ago.
Sure, and then I, I would almost, this is just a curiosity thing, from the people trying to get out of your driveway. In your study, would, did you look at how it would impact the residents there trying to get out or is that not something you looked at?
I, I'm not sure I understand the question, uh, I mean, the exiting from this development you're concerned about?
I, I'm just curious, if I were somebody who was moving into this complex and I needed to get to work, you know, eight o'clock on a Tuesday morning. Would you anticipate that if I need to make a left out of that driveway, that I'm gonna get stuck there? Or is that just something that we're expecting people to kind of anticipate and leave ten minutes early?
Well, it, it, I, I will say this, I will say this, we, we did an analysis of the site driveway and we didn't get level service F, if, if that's your point. If the question is that, that you're concerned about be, the ability to turn left out of the site driveway. You know, obviously with any kind of driveway on, on Willis Avenue, you're looking for a gap in traffic. But the, the, the counts that we have, the analysis that we did, we're showing a level service C for, for, for the, the vehicles leaving. The, the driveway, uh, in, in the peak hours, level service C, so it's not A, it's not F. Um, you know, so it, yeah, you'll wait, you'll wait for a gap in traffic, but you'll, you'll turn, you'll turn left or right, well, something to turn right. Uh, is, is our, our projection. So, yeah, I mean, it's gonna be, I'm not like, unlike any other driveway on, on a busy road. Uh, we forget, but we have clear sightlines and we don't have traffic back into the driveway. Uh, and yeah, it may take a few seconds to, to pull out. Uh, I, I, I don't think it's gonna be a factor in any way for, uh, people looking, looking at these units. Um, so, but level service C is pretty good, you know, in all things considered. It's not level service F.
Okay, thank you.
This is John, I'm gonna follow up on that, um. It's, you did not look at any weekend data in your report. Why not?
Well, for, 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 uh, because we don't usually do that for residential, uh, unless you're in a high-density shopping district. Uh, unless you do a retail use, we typically look at the residential developments, the, the, the weekday morning and afternoon peak hours. We don't usually look at the weekends, uh, because also traffic, traffic volume is also lower, uh, can be lower typically on, on a weekend. For a, you know, at Willis Avenue, so, uh, you know, we, we, we don't traditionally look at that and that, that's, that's in accordance with state requirements. If we were to go to O S A, the State Traffic Commission, you know, they, they would, they would also agree that, you know, the, the weekday morning, afternoon, peak hour for residence development is, is appropriate.
Yeah, I, I, I'm only speaking from experience. I've spent many, many, many minutes trying to get out of the tire. Place or where the restor is located to take a left onto Willets. It's impossible at many times because the traffic backs up well beyond where your entrance is gonna come in. And you either hope that somebody's gonna pause and let you out because that traffic light is short at that intersection. So inevitably, I always have to turn right. I think you're gonna find. You know, that your residents are in that same traffic, are gonna be taking you right onto Willets. And then perhaps cutting through the shopping plaza up to get to where they want to go. Uh, I'm just saying again, as a, just from experience.
Okay.
On the week, weekends.
On the weekend, okay.
Cannot turn left easily.
Well, I mean, from the, from the tire shop, you're right at the intersection. We're, we're five hundred feet, we're five hundred feet from the intersection, so the, you know, I, I, we have, we have, we have weekday counts. Uh, we don't have weekend counts. I, I hear what you're saying, um, in terms, in terms of weekend traffic, I, I will tell you that. We, we know that the, the weekend traffic volume, traffic all around is, is down at least forty percent, uh, in, in, in the area. So, and, and in fact, we have a count from DOT in October of twenty twenty, we compare to two thousand and nineteen. And it's down four thousand cars a day. So the, you know, the, the concern is regarding the weekend traffic. Uh, you know, the vans are definitely decreased with the, with the pandemic. Will they come back? We don't think they're going to. But I, I hear what you're saying, so it's gonna come down to on a weekend, if it is busy, looking for a gap in traffic and, and making that, making that exit. We're not talking about a Walmart here in terms of traffic generation, I'm talking about very low, you know, talking about fifty cars in the peak hour. So it's not gonna be, it's gonna be one car a minute at most, trying, trying to make that maneuver. Um, but, but if there is traffic backed up, then yeah, people will try, will, will choose the alternate route to, to, uh, to get to their destination.
Yeah, um, I, I, I guess the, uh, all's I know with you considered for traffic. That is traveling west, westbound traffic on Willetts.
Well, yeah.
In the evening, I think your estimate was about twenty-six, what was the number, uh, the evening?
Yeah, sounds about right.
Yeah, twenty-six entering in the evening. What I'm thinking about is you have basically just two lanes along Willets. If you've got, my, my thought is this, if you have a bunch of cars trying to enter the apartment complex. Heading west on Willets, they're gonna be backing up all the traffic, trying to continue to go straight because there's no ability to go around.
There, there's a, there's a shoulder, there's a, there's a three or four foot shoulder, uh, the three foot shoulder on the south side. And a three foot shoulder on the north side, so there's, there's not, there's not a ten foot shoulder. Um, but there, there is some shoulder room to, to allow potential for bypass, but, you know, this, if we're talking about retail development, I, I would, I would agree with you. We might look at a bypass to allow vehicles to go around and turn a vehicle. Um, but, you know, we're talking about, uh, you know, a, a ninety-eight unit development that's generating, you know, fifty cars at most in the, in the peak hour. I'm actually at forty-three, I'm looking at my report now. So, you know, we're, we're not gonna have ten cars coming in at, at the same time. We know that, you know, from hundreds of traffic studies, people don't leave all the same time in the morning and come in, in the afternoon. They, 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 they come in randomly, uh, unless they're obviously about a party or something like that, but they come in randomly. So, so I hear, I understand what you're saying, that there's a potential that there's no bypass, no, no definitive bypass or left turn lane. There's certainly no need for a dedicated turn lane here to turn into development. There, 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 the volumes are so low that, that's, that's not needed. Uh, in terms of what we're generating, so, but there is, there is some of the shoulder, you, you know, yeah, if a car pulls up and turn left in, there's a car coming. Then you have to wait for a couple of cars for a gap. The, the gaps are there, the gaps will be there for someone to turn left in there. So we don't, we don't anticipate, uh, you know, a, a, a backup, huge backup, maybe a, from time to time, a car or two waits for, for, for a gap to turn left. You know, if we're talking about, again, I mentioned, if you're on a retail establishment of Dunkin' Donuts or Walmart, yeah, it's a whole different ballgame. This is, this is forty-three cars that we're saying, um, you know, being generated. So it's not a, a lot of traffic and it's not all coming at once, but I understand what you're saying, you know, there, there's certainly is a possibility that you could have a couple of cars. Waiting to turn left in, but it's not gonna happen all the time. It's not, and it's not gonna cause a, extensive backup for vehicles trying to get in, into. The side driveway. Willetts Avenue is busy, but it's not gonna, you know, from what we're seeing here in other developments, if we're not gonna have a. You don't have a need for a separate bypass lane, uh, and, and, and turn lane, turning the development.
Yes, the last question I have on traffic is more pedestrian flow. So for folks who, um. Since one of your arguments is we're gonna have less and less, uh, vehicle use anyway. Um, you know, people are probably gonna be on foot and, and you've got sidewalks. Uh, but for those people who might want to, uh, cross over to, uh, you know, the, uh, the bank. Is there's a bank on the other side of the, of the road. Um, there's a dollar store. I, I can't tell from your, uh, diagram where the crosswalk is. For people who want to go across from the south side of Willets to north side of Willets. Or north side of Route One, right at that intersection.
So, you got that, Joe?
Well, let me, let me start. So a couple, a couple things on a parking argument. I, I, I will tell you that there is, uh, literally dozens of studies. Uh, regarding parking that, uh, you just, just Google parking in urban and suburban areas. And you will see that, uh, you'll see that many communities are getting rid of park requirements. Because the parking just isn't there, it just isn't there. So, so, you know, Brandon's point about parking before, you know, I've done studies myself, I've seen it, you know, one per unit, less than one per unit. So the parking, the parking paradigm now is that we are seriously over parking. We're over, over parking our development.
And my, my question has nothing to do with parking.
Well, I know, Bob, so you start, you start with the parking, so I'm getting, so, so the pedestrian, so regarding the pedestrian, so. In terms of pedestrian, we, you know, we provide, as Brandon mentioned, you know, the site plan shows that pedestrians have a throughout the entire campus. And it connects to the sidewalk on Willetts Avenue. And so if you're a pedestrian walking, you walk the sidewalk. And you walk to the sidewalk and walk up Willetts Avenue up to the intersection Route One and, and go, go, go east or go west to where you want to go. We are not proposing a, a crosswalk on Willetts Avenue, where, you know, mid, mid-block crosswalks are something that we avoid. Uh, they're, they're, they're dangerous, uh, DOT avoids them. So we are not proposing a mid, a mid-block crosswalk on, on Willetts Avenue. So the pedestrians, yes, the, the, the mobility pedestrian will be to go to the, go to the sidewalk, use the sidewalk that's there, walk up to Route One. And for Route One, you can go either direction you want to go to in terms of, as a pedestrian. And that, that's the safest access that we can provide. And that's, that's within state standards. We, we really just do not do mid-block crosswalks, uh, for, you know, on, on, on a busy road like Willetts Avenue.
Just to, just to add, just to tie that one out, there, there are two crosswalks across that, that, uh. Get people across the street from the existing network on Willets. There's one at the intersection of Boston Post Road and Willets.
Yeah.
That our sidewalk directly connects to, and then if you walk east towards New London, there's another sidewalk. Butler, um, from, I don't know what the third road name is, but.
It's a Butler, Butler Court.
Yeah, so there, there is a crosswalk there, but it, it crosses the street and goes to a dead-end landing, so it must have been put in. With the anticipation of sidewalks on the other side of Willets, but they're, they're not there. So the sidewalk we're improving connects to two side, to two crosswalks. Um, and the one down at Boston Post Road, I believe, is also interconnected with, uh, public transportation.
Yeah, there's a, there's a bus stop. Yeah, there's a there's a bus stop right over there.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, you said you'd like to give some more closing statement?
Yeah, I just I want to thank you for having us. We feel we've covered all all the details on this application. We recently received approval from the Conservation Commission. With some conditions that we've agreed to incorporate into a final plan set. We responded to staff comments on this application. And hopefully tied up all those loose ends. We met with the the Design Review Board earlier today and they provided a favorable. Referral to your commission with the caveat that we add some. Additional detail on our recreational amenities, including the location of the grills and. Chairs and tables, which we've agreed to do on the final plan set and. We feel we comply with your regulations and hope you see the same and we're looking to get going as soon as possible.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
One quick question.
Yep.
This is Karen. So Brandon, you keep mentioning this dog park slash grill area.
Yep.
Are they going to be separate? Like, is there gonna be a fencer on the dog area? Because, I mean, I'm a dog person, like, I've had a pet and I'll tell you, people who don't have dogs really don't appreciate other people's dogs coming to their barbecues.
You're absolutely right. And after our design review board where. We didn't have the fence shown, I spoke with Sigcon Associates. And he said, absolutely, the dog park will be fenced in. It'll be a four foot high semi privacy style with a gate. And so we will separate those two amenities within that one area. And provide, you know, so we do provide that crosswalk detail on our plans. If it's gonna be a semi privacy style, it would be similar in scale, just with pickets instead of a crosswalk. So. The answer is yes, and I fully agree with you.
And and that dog park will be available to the buildings of the residents of all the buildings?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be accessible from the parking areas and sidewalks directly.
Okay. So the recreation spaces are common to all of the buildings. They're not just like, this is building A's, this is building B's, that's building C's.
No, no, they're open. We just try to situate the grills close to their units in case they they want to go outside and grill and bring it back in. So we don't. We don't want building C walking 500 feet to use a grill. So. We try to provide a space for all of them, but anyone can use it and there's no exclusion.
You want you want a gate for the dog park next to the trash? So you just walk over with a dog bag?
It's a really good point.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. We have Mark's. Executive summary here. Hope everybody got an opportunity to look at it. Are there any questions with that and his? Recommended action? And then he has some conditions listed as well.
The only thing I would say about these is is that Mark did have an opportunity to go over these with the applicant team. And it sounds like most of them. Have either been resolved or are on their way to being resolved. The reason that they are still reflected here is that the plans that the commission has part of the record were previously set. Workers already being done to to address these. And so so they remain for conditions, but but as I think Brandon indicated, there's certainly. Many of those things have already been addressed or are on their way to being addressed. The only other elements. That came up at Design Review Board was a recommendation for a condition. Which would be condition 10 of the location of all site amenities. Such as the fencing, the grills, seating should be indicated on the final plan. It sounds like that's something that they've already discussed and are willing to incorporate. So that would be a potential 10 condition, but otherwise the application is compliant with the regulatory requirements of the zone district and the state statutes, as well as the rest of our. Site requirements. And so there is a level of compliance there, subject to these conditions that is in place.
Okay. So is there any discussion on what's before you?
This is John. You know, I think it's a it's a well designed project. The architecture looks wonderful. You know, the one thing that I I have a concern about obviously is the traffic. Because I see it all the time. I drive it all the time. That being said, you know, we have a report. From traffic impact analysis by a traffic engineer. I'm not a traffic engineer by any stretch of the imagination. My questions are really designed mostly just to make sure that. The things that I had thought about and are concerned about had had been part of the analysis that was done. From the responses we received, it appears that my questions were incorporated into the analysis or thought about while they might have might not have been expressed in it. They were thought about. So that being said. I I would be in favor of this, but again, I do have some concerns. That the traffic is not going to be quite as easy as it. As it seems to be set forth in the traffic impact analysis.
And John, I'd just like to make a little comment on what you were saying there. I know exactly what you're talking about down by the tire shop, right at that intersection of Boston Post Road and Willetts Avenue. And if you're looking to turn left out of that tire store parking lot, it is difficult at best. There's no doubt about that. And I'll. And I think that's any time of day. And I think the primary reason for that is because that traffic light. When it's red, backs up traffic, even if it's three, four, five cars. That person trying to get out of the tire store. It is back. He can't go. So like you say, somebody has to be considerate. And allow that person to go. If he's not lucky enough that for those five, four, whatever many cars there are to get by and he can jump out before that light turns red again on him. So I I agree with what you're saying there 100%. Um, so I don't think that's going to improve no matter what we do. And the only way to improve on that would be to change that entrance out of that tire store. And I don't see that happening. And I don't see anybody else sees it happening. But that. That situation already exists and it's not a problem of this particular development.
Yeah.
Will there be additional cars coming down Willetts Avenue to back up at that traffic light? I'm sure there will be.
I I I agree with you, Joe. And and I, Mr. Ballas, just did point out that that exit is much closer to the light. Than where this exit and entrance for this project is going to be, which makes it more difficult. And I think part of the problem is has to do with the timing of the light. And things that could be changed and they're getting out of our control, out of the applicant's control. I I'm just saying it is, you know, traffic in that area is is an issue. It is a problem.
Yeah, it is. Even even coming off of Boston Post Road, turning onto Willetts Avenue, because they they don't typically stop. You know, so they shoot right off the Boston Post Road onto Willetts Avenue. So those folks, again, coming out of the tire store. Have to be very, very cautious about the traffic coming from their left. So, yeah, it's it's a pretty precarious situation. There's no doubt about it.
And and there may be opportunities between the Town Department of Public Works and State DOT to talk over time about signal timing and and sort of how that. The whole sort of stretch and corridor operates, certainly as. As we get into the Planet Conservation Development elements, we can identify areas where we want to focus future analysis. But I I do agree that that one particular application would not necessarily be responsible for trying to rectify. The situation and certainly what was identified is the maintenance of level of service B. So that that exists as well. But but if it's an issue that the commission would like staff to follow up on with other departments, we can certainly have those conversations separately.
All right, thank you.
Yep. And this is Karen. I I just want to add on to what John was saying. I agree. That the traffic at that light is difficult at best. And I think this was a really nice presentation. One thing that I did want to ask before we move on, there is a mention in there about the affordable housing. And I can't quite. I'm sure I saw it, but I don't see it right now. How many units are are going to be qualified as affordable in this?
We're proposing 10 or 10.2%.
And Abby, how is that? In line with what you would hope to see?
So I think the the number is fantastic. I think one thing that the commission needs to be very clear on is. There are units that are priced affordably and would meet sort of the state income levels. On offer, which is what the the development team is offering here. But what we don't have is probably a separate conversation with them is whether or not those units will be formally restricted in compliance with state requirements to count toward. Our our affordable unit counts in town. So there's a difference between units that are priced affordably and could be. Would would meet on their face the criteria for somebody earning 80% of the area median income to only spend 30% or less of their income on that housing. But there have to be certain restrictions. In place and a maintenance program for tracking those units and making sure that if, you know, somebody moves out, that somebody else with qualifying income and such. Would be part of things. So I think, you know, in the absence of a town requirement for those restricted units, I think the. The offering of of these units is is great. You know, we do not have a mechanism to require any particular restriction at this time. But we do have, you know, a developer who is willing to, you know, sort of incorporate those voluntarily. And and again, whether we're able or not to take credit for those until there's a regulatory change on the parts of the town. You know, we we can't enforce it over time. But but I think it's much appreciated that there's there's been that offering, at least at the outset, to make this happen. I don't know, Brandon, if there's been. Any talk with with the team there about the actual restriction of those units and how they might be managed over time or what the that piece is. We haven't gotten into those details again, because we don't have a regulatory requirement. And this is a sort of by right approval.
So we, the way we do it, which applies to Waterford Park, where we do have affordable units there. They're calculated based on 80% of the. The HUD limits for Norwich and New London County. And that's based on income level and median family income. And we do the calculation the same way, whether it was through an 8-30G process or on this case voluntary. And we do provide the year data to the town. So that you do have those statistics for our facility. So whether that can be counted and we need to go one more step, I don't know, but I do know we we do report it to you. The town so that you have the numbers on your rolls and can keep track of it. And the same will apply to this development. We'll do the same calculation and submit it to the town.
Okay, so Abby, is that something that we need to continue with? Or is that?
I think I think what's being offered here is fantastic. We need to look at the the reporting mechanism to the town to make sure that we're it's coming to the folks that need to see it. But. That would but in terms of the. Mechanism from a regulatory perspective of requiring particular restrictions or reporting elements. Again, this is a volunteering one. As part of the Affordable Housing Plan, one of the strategies that I imagine will be discussed with the consulting firm is whether or not the town wants to. Put forward any kind of whether it's inclusionary zoning or minimum unit counts based on densities or any of those. And the mechanisms and requirements for those restrictions. So that's something that, you know, once the the Affordable Housing and Housing Choice Survey is completed. That I think the commission will take up as a policy recommendation and whether or not there's a regulatory change that follows. So I think there's a much, there's a bigger conversation surrounding that for the town that needs to happen. You know, in in this case, I think we're fortunate to have a developer who is willing to voluntarily partner with us to try to achieve those goals.
Okay, I just wanted to double check before that we didn't need to include any kind of language. Thank you.
There's there's not a requirement that's based in regulation that the commission could could add and not a condition sort of passed to to modify what's been offered. But but again, it's been, it's a good offer.
Okay.
All right, with that said, if there's no other questions or comments. We can entertain a motion on this application.
This is John. I'll I'll move. That the planning commission adopt the findings. One through six set forth in the staff's memo of March 9, 2021 regarding. PL 21 dash one. And that the commission with those findings approved the proposal. Subject to conditions one through nine as set forth. In that March 9, 2021 memorandum. Just make sure that. And yeah, oh, and Karen, you had, if you want to amend to add. Your request regarding the fence for the dog, please feel free to do so.
I would like to add about the fence for the dogs.
With that amendment, I would like to propose that we move approval.
Okay, I think also, John, it was from the. Design Review Board. It was an additional condition that they wanted on there.
I think it was the the final plans should reflect the proposed locations of the. Grill seating areas and dog park fencing. So I think it's consistent with what this amendment is. Any of those recreational amenities would be shown on the final plan.
Well, I'll adopt that as amendment to my motion.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I was in it also, so so move. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Look forward to your project.
Yeah, we are too. Can't wait to start.
Great.
Take care.
Have a good night now.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number five would be correspondence. No correspondence. Number six is administrative review.
There's nothing to review.
No, nothing to review. Okay, item seven would be adjourned.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody. You have a great evening.
Thank you, too.
Thank you, too.